Mrs. Gaines?
Present.
Mr. Hanos?
Here.
Mrs. Bowlin?
Mrs. Bowlin?
Bowlin?
Here.
Mr. Carlin?
Yes.
Dr. Flowers?
Present.
Mr. Leary?
Here.
Ms. Sylvia?
Here. Stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon, everyone. Evening. Is it evening yet? We pause for a moment of silence for Henry P. Fletcher, 89, of Newport, Rhode Island. Died Monday, April 20th, 2015, at Grand Islander Healthcare Center in Middletown. Born April 13th, 1926, in Newport. Mr. Fletcher graduated from Rogers High School and enlisted in the United States Army Signal Corps in 1944, serving in World War II, the occupation of Germany, and the Korean Conflict. He served in the Berlin airlift of 1948. Upon his retirement from the military in 1967, he returned with his family to Newport and began his second career as an ROTC instructor at Rogers High School, where he retired again in 1989. To the many young men and women that he mentored and with whom he stayed in touch, he was affectionately known as Sarge. He is survived by his son Carlton H. Fletcher and his daughter-in-law Elizabeth Miles of Washington, DC, and by his daughter Edith Fletcher and his son-in-law Robert Cornet of Newport. Stephen J. Gleason, 56, of Middletown, died Monday, May 4th, at home surrounded by family. He was the loving husband of Susan Burns Gleason. Born in Newport on October 28th, 1958, he was the son of the late Daniel Gleason Jr. and Helen Mason Gleason. He is survived by his son Carlton H. Fletcher and his daughter-in-law Elizabeth Miles of Washington, DC, and by his daughter Edith Fletcher and his son-in-law Robert Cornet of Newport. Besides his wife of four years, he is survived by his brother David Gleason and his wife Karen of Portsmouth, Rhode Island, and sisters Elizabeth Casey, Patricia Mergo, a Rogers High School custodian, and her companion Frank Finnegan, and Mary Gleason and her husband Edward Shafell, all of Middletown, Rhode Island. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Now, before we proceed...
Madam Chair.
Yes.
May I, please? It's most unusual to do this, but I feel particularly compelled to do it with regard to Sarge. I was, in the early 80s, way before any of these kids were around, I was in the Rogers ROTC program. And the late Colonel Boyani was the leader of the program, and Sarge was Sarge. And he was also my next-door neighbor when I lived on Bedlow Avenue and when he lived on Yale. And he was a fine, fine man, a great man, and I will miss him. May God rest his soul.
Thank you very much. I would like to ask for a motion to amend the agenda. We have under the action items, 8.1, 8.2, and 8.3. If we could move those to follow the resolutions and certificates of achievement, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. The agenda is amended. Okay, now for the good news. First, we have certificates of achievement for the Rogers Boys Indoor Track and Field Team, our Class C champions.
Okay. Ms. Gaines, I ask that we move that one to the end of the pile because the boys are just coming back from lacrosse and some of them are on the bus. And they just called me there in front of Federal Institute Bank, so...
Okay.
Just move them to the bottom of that pile, and they should be here.
All right. The next one is Katma here.
Yes, she is.
Katma just walked in.
Oh, right.
The future governor is here. And her parents, please come up.
Somewhere in here, there's a certificate. There it is. I got it. Oh, okay. So this is just my copy, right?
Right.
Katma, where are you?
She's right in front of us.
Ah, okay. Come on up. I have for you a certificate of recognition. Certifies that Katma Bowmer, Frank E. Thompson Middle School, is awarded this certificate of recognition for being named the Governor-for-a-Day Essay Contest winner by Governor Gina Raimondo, presented this 12th day of May, 2015, by the Newport School Committee. And here's a nice picture of you and your family, Governor. There.
It's beautiful.
I said to Katma the day she was governor that maybe in 30 years we would be really going for her inauguration.
Katma, do you want to tell us what your favorite part of the day was? Just being governor.
No, just asking. Yeah. Planting the tree.
Planting the tree.
Great. That's good. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Carlin, you have some recognitions for the Unified Basketball Team? Would you guys come forward?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Should I proceed?
Yes.
Okay. Fantastic. Emily Boucher? Emily Boucher. Ron Sandbrenn? Trevor Casseis? Angel Kous-Martinis? We still want to give them the recognition they deserve, obviously. Christopher Hirsch? Aj Jones? Candy London? Dylan Moss Taylor? July. You are... Aria Winters? Coach? Assistant Coach Cooper? I will, absolutely. The superintendent has asked that it be read, rightfully so. Every one of the certificates read that it is awarded this certificate of recognition for representing Rogers High School in the 2014-15 Division JV Unified Vikings Basketball Team, which successfully displayed good sportsmanship and teamwork in the true spirit of Unified Athletics. Presented this 12th day of May, 2015, by Jeff Goss, Principal of Rogers High School, Colleen Burns Jermaine Superintendent of the Newport Public Schools, and Joey Vagains, the Chair of the Newport School Committee. Congratulations.
The next... We're going to do some resolutions. We're still waiting for the Boys Track Team to get in the building.
Ms. Gaines, think we could have the coach say something at all?
Yeah. That wouldn't be a bad idea.
Do you have to speak into the microphone?
I have to go on behind the scenes.
Yes.
Act a little more professional. I don't really have a lot to say except for it really was an honor to be the coach this year. It was my first time, but I think I did a pretty good job. I had one heck of a team, and they didn't play well in the championship, only in the championship. They played well the whole season. And I think it was a really well, really good season, so that's all I have to say.
We were, we voted to change the agenda a bit, so if it's okay with everyone, if there's no objections, some of the students are here. Some of the students are here to support the action items on lacrosse and the social studies request to travel to Washington. Those are the three items that we moved. So if there's no objection from the members of the school committee, I'd like to take those up, and maybe by the time we finish them, the track team will be here.
The track team is the lacrosse team.
Okay. I've just been told that two other presentations that we are making, it would be very timely if we could take them because they have other duties to do. That's the Principal of the Year. Mr. Crowley. We have a surprise for you.
I love surprises.
Marson, our official photographer, took this picture the other day.
Just in a late Mother's Day present?
For you. You're welcome. I will read the resolution for Middletown Principal of the Year.
Middletown?
Middle School. Sorry, fell back into old habits. Whereas Jamie Crowley started his teaching career as... That's where I first met him.
I know.
Jamie Crowley started his teaching career as a French teacher and Foreign Language Department Chair at Mount Hope High School in Bristol Warren, and continued that career as a French teacher at Mount Hope High School for 10 years. And whereas Jamie Crowley became the Assistant Principal and Director of Guidance at Mount Hope High School in 2007, and was highly successful in that position. And whereas Jamie Crowley, who holds a bachelor's degree and master's degree from Boston College, and a certificate of advanced study of education from Boston University, and became principal at the Frank E. Thompson Middle School in the summer of 2011. And whereas Jamie Crowley has been the recipient of several awards, including the Boston College Teaching Excellence Award, 205 Mount Hope Teacher of the Year, 205 Bristol Warren Regional School District Teacher of the Year, 206 National Honor Society Teacher of the Year, 2009 Rhode Island Distinguished Educators File, 2000... I know you had a file. 2010 Rhode Island Milken Educator of the Year Award, and the 2010 Rhode Island Assistant Principal of the Year Award. That's a mouthful. And whereas Jamie Crowley has spent the last four years improving the school climate and achievement scores of the Thompson Middle School students, reducing the truancy rate and boosting attendance rates. And whereas, as a result of the above, Thompson Middle School's proficiency rates have increased steadily over the course of the past four years. And whereas Jamie Crowley was honored as the Middle School Principal of the Year by the Rhode Island Association of School Principals. Therefore, be it resolved that Jamie Crowley be commended by the Newport School Committee as the 2015 Rhode Island Middle School Principal of the Year. Therefore, be it also resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the official records of the Newport School Committee, and the original be presented to Jamie Crowley as an expression of our appreciation for his performance as a truly professional and outstanding member of the educational community, and as one who has gained the respect of those whom he has served so well. The following bear witness, Joey Vagains, Chairman on behalf of the Newport School Committee, and Colleen B. Jermaine.
I'll be quicker than Carl. And by the way, Carl Magnar needs to be considered for unsung hero awards in this city. The job that he does, I see it on a daily basis. I don't know that everybody understands exactly what he does and how well he does it. Thank you, Carl. So on my behalf, eloquently read, and I thank you. I want to thank our superintendent, who nominated me and has supported me 100%. And I feel exactly the same way about our school committee. And more importantly, than supporting me, supporting our kids in the school. And I thank you for that. Thank you.
We have a motion that...
Second.
It's been moved in second, that the resolution be adopted. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. This might seem like the night for Thompson Middle School. We now have another very important and distinguished award that will be presented by Vice Chair David Hanos. Yeah. You need this?
No. I can speak louder than that. All right. I'm standing out here tonight because I want, and I've got the distinguished honor of recognizing the Newport School Department's Teacher of the Year, who happens to be a very dear friend of mine, whom we share the same birthday, different years. I'm definitely older than beautiful Jen Robinson. Jen, would you please come up and be honored? Whereas Jennifer Robinson started her teaching career as a library media specialist at Roosevelt Middle School in New Britain, Connecticut, in 1998, and has continued that career as a library media specialist in Newport Public Schools for the past 15 years. And whereas Jennifer Robinson, who holds a bachelor's degree in journalism and mass communications from the University of Northern Colorado, and a master's degree in library and information science from the University of Rhode Island, and is enrolled in the URI Graduate School, working towards a certificate in digital literacy, became library media specialist at the Frank E. Thompson Middle School in the fall of 2008. And whereas Jennifer Robinson is a superior teacher, organized and focused, and a master at teaching young learners. She has achieved the distinction of being rated highly effective teacher over the course of two years, and is regarded by her peers as being a master teacher. And whereas Jennifer Robinson carefully describes exactly what students are learning, why they are learning it, and also specifies how the learning may be applied with hands-on projects and in life in general. She continuously plans and implements strategies and processes to reach the ultimate goal of having her students become lifelong learners by encouraging her students to reflect and think deeply. She is ensuring their future success. And whereas Jennifer Robinson was honored as the District Teacher of the Year by the Newport Public Schools Teacher of the Year Selection Committee. Therefore, be it resolved Jennifer Robinson was honored as the District Teacher of the Year by the Newport Public Schools Teacher of the Year Selection Committee. Therefore, be it also resolved that Jennifer Robinson be commended by the Newport School Committee as the 2016 Newport Public Schools Teacher of the Year. Therefore, be it also resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the official records of the Newport School Committee, and the original be presented to Jennifer Robinson with an expression of our appreciation of her performance as a truly professional and an outstanding member of the educational community, and one who has gained the respect of those whom she has served so well. The following bear witness is Chairwoman Joey Vagains and Superintendent Colleen Jermaine. Congratulations.
I'd just like to briefly say that Thompson is a fantastic place to work. I'm really happy to ride on the coattails of Katma and on the coattails of Mr. Crowley. I think it's been a fantastic couple of weeks for us, and I'm just so proud to be part of this team, and thank you.
I want you to move a motion to...
Make a motion. We move the resolution forward?
Adopted.
Adopted? Excuse me?
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Motion passes. I see some new faces there. I hope it's the track team. Is it?
Yep.
Okay, okay. Mrs. Bowlin will make the presentation.
Could we get the... Anybody that was on the track team and the coach up here, please? The coaches? You guys can just stand in front right there. I'll read this, and then we'll talk about you for a minute. All right. It says here, "Whereas the Rogers High School Boys Indoor Track and Field Team distinguished itself by recently winning the State Division C Championship. And whereas the coach and members of the team, by achieving this honor, proved to the citizens of Newport and the state the quality of their training and practice. And whereas the achievement of this goal further evidenced the fine traditions of Roger High School. And whereas the faculty, student body, parents, and citizens of Newport actively supported the efforts of this team, therefore be it resolved that the Newport School Committee formally extends to the coaches and track of the Rogers High School Boys Indoor Track and Field Team its congratulations on winning the Rhode Island State Division C Championship for the 2014-15 school year, and offers to the staff and team members unanimous, 'Well done.' On receipt of this great honor, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the official records of the Newport School Committee, and the original be presented to Coach Andrew Martucci, Boys Indoor Track and Field Team, as an expression of our sincere appreciation and acknowledgement of their service to the school and our community. Wherefore, the following bear witness, Joey Vagains, Chairwoman, and Colleen Jermaine, Superintendent." Our coach will take it for us. I just wanted to say, of course, this is very special to me. You know, my son has been on track for three, you know, years. And all these fine boys, I know them. They're very dedicated young men who've really done a fine job, you know, for Newport. It takes a lot to be on an athletic team and keep your grades up, and I know that's all part of the whole deal. And I know to Coach Martucci, he travels a great distance to do this. And it's very... Sometimes he has to travel all the way to Providence, bring the team back on the little white bus, and then he travels all the way back to Providence, where he lives. So it takes, you know, a lot of dedication. And trust me, you know, I don't... These coaches don't get paid enough to do what they do and how they influence our boys, not only, you know, athletically, but also scolastically, morally, and making them fine young men in this instance. So really appreciate your hard work and the work of all you, you know, boys to do with the honor you gave to this community. All right? And Coach, you want to say anything, or?
I just want to say thank you to the school committee for honoring us tonight. It was a long season indoor and now a long season outdoor. This is just a small portion of the team. We have over 50 guys on the outdoor team. Then there are a team we had over 40 guys. We're looking to repeat, hopefully, this spring. Hopefully, you'll be hearing all these guys' names. I'm sure you've all read them in the paper, listened to them on announcements, and maybe you know them from living in Newport. But they're fine young athletes, fine young students, and they represent Rogers well, and they represent the Newport community well. I just want to congratulate them for their success and continued success. Thank you. All right. So from left to right, we have Austin Grant.
Would you raise your hand so your parents and everyone can see you on TV?
Next to him, we have Casey Joe Roden. Levon Campbell. Chris Straka. Marquis Scott. Amon Phelps. Connor Pratt. Jonathan Chapman. Jesse Fickle. And Riley Bowlin. Thank you.
I just want to make the coach and the team aware that certificates will be forthcoming, and we'll have them handed out to you. So thank you very much for all you're doing for Rogers, and go Vikings. Thank you.
Okay, if you would turn to Action Items 8.1, presented by the superintendent.
Yeah.
Okay, may I see it? My machine just went down. Thank you. Technical difficulty here. Thank you, Ms. Gaines, Chairwoman Gaines. The first one is, actually, it's Mrs. Bowlin that would like to speak on behalf of the Thompson and Rogers Warriors Girls Lacrosse, and then Rogers Tiger Vikings Lacrosse, following after.
So what we have here is, you'll see, a huge representation of some students and some dedicated people from our community and some staff that would like tonight to ask the school committee to recognize lacrosse as a... Well, for three things tonight, so it'll be two separate actions. But one is to... Lacrosse is asking to become a, what we would call, a team sport, a...
Varsity.
No, no, not the... At the middle school, it's going to become a team sport. And at the high school, it's going to become a varsity sport. So that's what... We have some people that are going to speak to us on that. And then the second action is, the boys will be talking about becoming independent. They already are a varsity sport. They're just going to become independent from the Tiverton team. So first, I think Matt Noons wants to... He's kind of our lead person here, who's really... Cheerleader, yeah. Leader, cheerleader.
Madam Chair, Madam Superintendent, thank you. Committee Member Bowlin. I think it may be best... I don't know whether... We have a couple of students that are participating. I just wanted to give, for your benefit, a quick overview of what we've done just in a short amount of time, and then hear from the students, and then follow that up with concluding thoughts there. First of all, thank you to all the athletes... To borrow...first of all, thank you to all the athletes on, you know, recognizing these other teams tonight. There's a good spirit in the room and we're at the beginning of hopefully starting and carrying on a tradition of Rogers and Thompson Lacrosse, something that's very new. So it's great to see all those jerseys out there and tremendous support. In...to borrow a line that we were just out here about a week ago with the middle school team and Jamie was there as well, watching the girls compete in a match, and I went over, I was in my stripes, I was officiating the match as well, in addition to coaching. So it was difficult being the independent arbiter in coaching as well, but we're working through that. But Jamie came over and he looked at the field and he said, "Isn't this great? In February, we had nothing." And so just in February, we've pulled this group together, we've met at the hut when all the snow was on the ground. Ed Harrigan and the Newport Rec were great about getting a space and the girls picked up their sticks. And it's just been a great club spirit that has come together throughout the spring. We had a fundraiser the other night for both Rogers and Thompson Middle School Lacrosse, which was a tremendous success. And so over the last few months, there's been a tremendous momentum moving forward behind these students. And Athletic Director Colley has been great in terms of coordinating various events for them. It's not always easy when you drop additional things on them, they're late. But at this point, I just wanted to turn it over to a couple of the players and get some of their input. So Catherine Hermes, I don't know whether that mic is live.
When I first heard that Rogers was having a girls' lacrosse team, I was skeptical and hesitant to join. I had never played before and was nervous I wouldn't be as experienced as some of the other girls and that I would struggle with picking up a new sport. But I was pleasantly surprised to discover this was not at all the case. When I arrived at the first practice, I was welcomed by a very enthusiastic Mr. Noons and a group of smiling girls who were very happy to have a new player. We began, of course, with the basics because, like myself, many of the other girls had never played before. I was happy to learn it wasn't very difficult to pick up and within a few practices, my confidence with the sport was growing. We have practices four days a week and try to scrimmage with teams from other schools at least once a week, and I cannot wait to get to each and every practice. Coach Lauren and Coach Maria and the girls make practices so fun and I really feel like we have not only learned so much about the sport, but also learned so much about each other and have truly bonded as a team. Although this is our very first year, I have a lot of confidence in the program and see the potential it has if we have the opportunity to make it a varsity sport next year. The girls on the team that are underclassmen are very enthusiastic about the prospect of this growing program and we anticipate even more girls coming out and joining if we make it an official varsity sport next year. Although I am graduating this year and will not have the opportunity to play on the team next year, I look forward to coming back and watching the girls that I've played with along with many new faces on the field this coming spring. My hope for this program is that it does become a varsity sport and we continue what we started here this year for many future generations of Vikings. Thank you.
I was just thinking you could tell them about the great fundraising event we had this week.
Well, that was just last Friday evening and it was put together in short order and everybody did a tremendous job. I can't say enough, I mean, it was over $6,000 raised that night and that was... Yeah. So, I mean, every...all the parents are out working and gathering gifts and a silent auction and there were some very significant contributions there and so there's just a tremendous spirit happening behind this movement. Did we want to hear...did you have anyone else that was going to speak?
Yeah, I wanted just you to introduce maybe the Thompson team first and maybe then we could get up the two...we have two volunteer coaches at Rogers High School that these girls are doing this, you know, pro bono, and then they'll introduce the Rogers girls.
You want individual introductions?
We want the Warriors up here. Come on up Warriors.
Girls, come on up here. So from...we'll start from left to right there is Peyton Fitzgerald, my daughter Liza Noons, Anna Murphy, my daughter Tess Noons, my wife Marie Noons, Monica Martins, Alexander Cranston, Mary Lees, Josephine. I'm gonna...I'm not going to do well with the last name. Say again? Cara. Emma Martins, Catherine Straka, Peyton Gardner, and Catherine... Cara Rinder. At this point, I'd like to see Rogers come on up here as well and if we could just introduce
They're tall.
All right, yep, there we go. All right, so first from, I guess, from your left to my right, we have Coach Maria Dockerty. We have Riley Murphy, Cheyenne, I might butcher her last name, is it Cheyenne Arroyo? Yep, okay, got it. We have Ms. Olivia Noons, Coach Noons' daughter. Carly Cody, Emily Tollison, Avi Guerrero, Haley Bodycoat, Catherine Herms, Hannah Montgomery, Elizabeth Murphy, Jocelyn Dancer, Brenna Edwards, and McKenna Drury.
I'm looking for a cue from committee.
Oh, no, thank you very much, girls. I think that's...you can go back and...do we want to take these separately?
Continue to support.
All right. So, you know, Thompson...both of these teams are doing their best to raise money. They started a little bit earlier with, you know, back in February, trying to get this team together. And so they're helping, you know, they will be contributing. They've already, if you see, they've already got their...they call these pennies, I think, but they've got half their uniforms already, which they've fundraised for, which is incredible. And so what they're looking for tonight is to be made a varsity sport and at Thompson, a club sport is what we're looking for, that recognition.
Is there a motion, Mrs. Boland?
Not yet, not yet.
So we're looking for a motion to not...to do just what I said we were going to do.
Okay. Superintendent Jermaine?
Yes. The recommendation I'm bringing forward to you after hearing Ms. Boland and the school presentation, that my recommendation to you as a committee is to please accept the Thompson Middle School Warriors as a club and Rogers Vikings as a varsity lacrosse sport.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? I think you've done a good job. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
So now, well, Mr. Noons, you may as well stand up there anyway because you're part of this, but can we have Mr. Hanau, he's our...come on up? And just we might have some questions for you. And also, we have a couple of boys, I think, the boys' lacrosse team. If you want to just come up here and stand in front, and a couple of the boys, I think, are going to speak. This is a little different. The boys, three years ago, they were invited to join Tiverton. The first year, we had three players and they would go in the Lee's car, the Lee's van, three of them, every day up to Tiverton. It's an hour each way by the time you leave here and the time you get back. And the following year, there were at least, I think, 12 to 15 that went and it would fill the van and Mr. Hanau, every day, drove that van and up to Tiverton. He was a volunteer coach, as he is right now. He's been volunteering for two years. And we've joined with Tiverton. Last year, we had boys that had never played lacrosse ever. They came on that field and they ended up winning the state championship, the kids that had never, ever played. So I don't want to steal their thunder. I think the boys are going to talk a little bit about where they'd like and why they would like to see themselves now as an independent team. All right? Who was ever speaking? Introduce yourselves.
First things first, sorry for smelling up the room. I'm Riley Boland, I'm a junior here. This is my second year playing lacrosse. My first year, last year, I had never picked up a stick before the first game or the first practice. And I went out there and worked hard and we ended up winning a state championship that year. And I think right now, we have a great opportunity. Lacrosse is the fastest-growing sport in America and right now, we have an opportunity to get our own team here at Rogers and I think we should do that.
I'm MacLees. I was part of the three kids that started three years ago, it was my freshman year. And it was my brother and one other kid and myself and we'd drive up six days a week and practice with the Tiverton kids. And it was good. It was a big commitment for Liam to have to drive every day, but he did it. And then the next year, we got Coach Hanau, who volunteered to drive and help coach. And that really helped because it allowed more kids to get to play and it really, like, created a boom of interest. I talked to a lot of my friends and they came to play. And really, now is, like, in my opinion, the best time to try and start just a Rogers team. We have a good core of kids who've been playing for at least two years and basically a whole lot of interests that if kids didn't have to put four hours a day, six days a week, which is a big commitment if you're not really going to be...like, if it's your first year playing a sport, people are skeptical about that. But if they're just going to play for Rogers, it's less of a commitment, so I think a lot more kids would be willing to play.
Another thing, I leave for school at seven in the morning and then we go to practice about 4:30 and we get back at eight o'clock. So I don't get home till 8:30 most nights, so I go home, I eat, I shower, I try to do my homework. And by then, I don't have time to do anything else, so it'd be a lot easier and I think a lot more kids would be interested in playing lacrosse if we had our own team and didn't have to drive to Tiverton every day. Yeah. Also, the island is very competitive with the different schools and every team on the island has, like, football, we're all competitive, you know, track, we all have a track team. But lacrosse is the only sport that every team on the island doesn't have. And...
Every school has except us.
Yeah. All the neighboring towns, South Kingston, NK, Bristol, they all have lacrosse teams except us. So I think we should change that.
Good boy. Don't leave so quickly. Could you...one of you boys introduce all the boys here and tell what grade they're in?
I'm John Hanau, I'm the bus driver. But at the far end, we have Jacob Bianchi, he's a senior goalie, never played before in goal. He's doing a tremendous job this year. Right now, we are in fourth place and we will have a home advantage in the playoffs coming next week. We have John Noons, who is a freshman, who is an awesome addition to this team this year. He's doing a phenomenal job on one of the first two lines of offense for us. We have Mr. Straka over there. Chris Straka is a junior, played last year. He's a tremendous addition to the team this year as far as getting things done for us. Last year, he didn't get as much playing time, but when he got out there, he made a difference. Right next to him, we have Mitchell. Mitchell, I'm blanking right now, Mitchell. Ventora, sorry. Mitchell Ventora is a freshman, he's done a tremendous job. He scored a couple of goals yesterday in our JV game. We got to play a 20-minute overtime, did a nice job in that. He gets out there during the varsity sessions and plays hard for us. Aiden Noons is a junior, he's joined the team this year. He's very aggressive, very competitive. He wants to get out there and play a lot and he works hard every day for it. We have Mackenzie Leno, who has...Leno, sorry. Mackenzie Leno, who is a sophomore, he has some great stick ability. He's...we've kind of moved him around a little bit, but he's a tremendous player on our team. He's played two years now. Right next to him, we have obviously MacLees, who is the second highest scoring person on our team this year. He makes up a good portion of our offense. And we also have Mr. Boland here, who is one of our top three defensemen. He does a tremendous job on defense and I can't say enough about their commitment. Four hours a day is a lot. These kids work hard for it and they really have built a good relationship with Tiverton. But as they said, for the last two years on the bus rides, I hear a lot, believe it, it's a small little white bus, and I've heard them talk about getting their own program. And even once this year, we got to scrimmage the Tiverton kids and at the...on the way home, this is before our season began, they said, "Coach, we won, we can have our own team." So, but again, we don't want to throw Tiverton under the bus. They have been very gracious, they have been an awesome addition. We've made some great relationships and friendships. But when you put a co-op together, the end result is that the hope for the Rhode Island Inter's Classic League is that you get two schools that participate because you're opening it up for more kids. So that's what the hope is and, you know, that's what we're suggesting to the committee here. And thank you for your time and I know it's a busy night for you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Gaines, the recommendation is that the Rogers Tiger Vikings Lacrosse will now become the Rogers Vikings Lacrosse Team for Rogers High School, varsity sport.
Is there a motion to move the recommendation?
I would like to move the recommendation.
I'll second it, Madam Chair.
It's moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
And aye? Opposed? Again, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Fine, now bring home a championship.
Madam Chair, if I may, I do at this time want to graciously thank the Tiverton School Department and the Tiverton School Committee for bringing our students together and for enabling us to go off-island, make friendships. So I wish Tiverton well and again to Superintendent Bill Ririck and to the Tiverton School Committee. Thank you very much and for Jim Colley, our A.D., and John Hanau for putting this all together for the students. Good luck. Thank you.
You guys can probably go home and have dinner now. And take a shower.
And study.
Take a shower.
That's right. Study. Thank you. Eight point three. Rogers High School Social Studies requests to travel to Washington, DC for the National History Day. Colleen?
You mean Col...Colleen Herms. Bye. Thank you. Hi there, good evening. My name is Colleen Hermes. I am the Social Studies Department Chair at Rogers and I am respectfully requesting some funding to bring our team of National History Day students down to Washington, DC. Rogers has been participating in the National History Day Fair since about 2008 and every year that we've been in the fair, we've had a winner or two or more. And for every year that we've been in this competition, the school committee has generously sponsored our trip down to the University of Maryland where the competition is held, which enables the students to stay at the dorm and experience what dorm life is like for five days. for, for five days, the, the conditions of living in a dorm before they've attended college on their own. And also, we're allowed to, we travel into the Capitol, we take a tour of the monuments and the museums, we meet with senators and representatives from Rhode Island and other states, and we meet with students from around the country who share the interest and the love of history. The teachers, we meet with other teachers who teach the content from across the country, and I think we've done an excellent job of representing Rogers High School on a national level. So, I, to be brief, I would just request that, today I was talking to Mr. Goss, our principal, and he has $2,000 in a principal's fund that he would give towards our trip. We've done some pricing, and to reduce the cost, we would plan on going with, I think, if you have it in front of you, option two, which would be to rent a van and drive our 10-student team down to the University of Maryland on Sunday, June 14th. So with that, we would need an estimated $5,740 to make this possible. So I respectfully request that that is done.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Nope.
Oh.
If, if Mrs. Hermes is done with her presentation?
Yes.
I think it's an excellent choice for the Newport School Committee to authorize the funds, and I so move.
Well, we're not ready for a motion yet. Superintendent has to make a recommendation.
I make the recommendation.
No, that's the superintendent's job.
Well, if it's on the agenda, I respectfully request that we approve the item. It's on the agenda.
You will have a chance to vote on that.
Okay.
Colleen?
All right.
Okay, I recommend that we support Mrs. Hermes and her trip to Washington, D.C.
Madam Chair, point of clarification. What's, what's the difference? With all due respect, with great respect.
We try to follow protocol, David. Is there a motion? Now you can make your motion.
No, I'm, I'm not gonna make the motion, I'm gonna vote for it.
Is, I have a question.
Make a motion.
I'll second it. Second.
It's been moved in second, discussion?
I have a question. Just that, every year, the school pays for this trip?
The school committee has funded it from district funds, and sometimes, in part, from Rogers High School's principal's fund. That's how it's been done in the past.
Okay, but it's not in the budget?
We, we have a budget freeze at the moment, and I, we're not clear if Mr. Nelson, Ms. Tracy is not here, she's in the building, but she's not here at this moment, and that was part of what Ms. Tracy's, our finance director, was, because of the budget freeze. She did deny and request, Mrs. Hermes, come before you.
How many students are going?
Ten.
Ten, and then you have two.
Two chaperones, yeah. Myself is one.
So are, are the students themselves, it's not always feasible, but are some of them contributing toward that, families are contributing toward the cost, or?
Yeah, generally, the families contribute towards any incidentals or spending money that they may need, yes, yes.
And they, and they also, they stay at the University of Maryland, and so the meals are provided there, and it also gives the kids a real feel for what it's like to go to college. These are juniors, their first kind of college experience, and then they also, they pay for the meals anytime they go on a field trip.
Correct.
And, and incidentals like that.
It's always been a very positive thing, and in some cases, we've had, you know, students who've never, never been outside of the region, the, the New England area, getting to go down there and see part of the country.
They get to cross the bridge or two.
That's right.
I know the young lady who got the performance award, is Abigail Adams, she was just, just absolutely thrilled.
They really do make Newport proud.
It did very well, yeah.
And when we were down there last year, there was a teacher event, and a few teachers said to us, you know, a few years ago, we, we, Rogers came out of nowhere, and all of a sudden, we became something to reckon with, and so we were very proud of that. And so for the students, you know, some of our competitors, as I mentioned here, Mount St. Charles and La Salle Academy, so we, we always feel an extra sense of pride when we can, you know, have a victory, or, you know, get a victory against those.
Are they planning any kind of a separate fundraiser, or?
Generally, it's, it's up to each.
It's kind of short notice.
Yes, and you never know, that's the thing, you never know. We, we had the fair on May 2nd, so you don't know what's going to happen until you, you hear the good news that day, so.
Because you don't just go, you are nominated to go, right?
Yes, the students are earning the way.
Which in itself is an honor.
Yes, yeah.
Is there any further discussion? You've heard the motion that we fund, we fund the trip to D.C.
Yes, Washington, D.C., and they're gonna stay in the university, at the University of Maryland.
Correct.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? All unanimous?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Hermes, for all you're doing, for sponsoring us.
Madam Chair, may I ask for a point of clarification, please, in procedure? Do we need to wait, as school committee members, if there's an action item on the agenda, do we need to wait until the superintendent, or anyone else beside a school committee member has made a motion?
Yes.
No, we don't. I, I'm sorry, I asked you a question, so I should wait for the answer.
You ask me a question, and I answer.
And I'm waiting for the answer.
The school committee votes on the recommendations of the superintendent.
I respectfully disagree if there's something on the agenda.
Well, you can disagree all you want, look in policy, look in the law, and we'll move from there, but we're not going to waste any more time tonight talking about it. So we'll return to the agenda, back to number four, resolution on...
Three point one.
How about three point one?
How about three point one?
Uh huh. We have our speed update.
Public comment.
Oh, yeah, don't you sit in there waiting.
Public comment, look, Colleen, is there any public comment?
Nobody has said there's a public comment.
No, great. Student council update, almost forgot you.
Catherine.
What did I call you?
Colleen, your mother.
It has been a very busy month here at Rogers High School, as evidenced by all the things today. Rogers High School juniors competed at the State National History Day Fair in Providence ma- on May 2nd, and earned numerous awards. Alexander Sink, Megan Ramston, and Scott Murphy won first place for their documentary film on Robert E. Lee, and Abby Wozlian won first place for her performance on The Life and Times of Abigail Adams. The team from the Newport Area Career and Technical Center took second place at the recent Cyber Patriot Competition. RHS seniors began presenting their senior projects today and are finishing up scholarship applications as we prepare to graduate only one month from today. Our Vikings are having very strong seasons, and recently, Riley Miller, Jesse Fickle, Jonathan Chapman, and Aaron Johnson made the Rhode Island All-Star Baseball Team and helped their team secure the win. Please come out and support all our spring sports athletes as their seasons come to a close. The Rogers College Advisor, Jessica Marto, recently organized a senior launch day assembly. During the assembly, members of the senior class of 2015 spoke about their plans for post-graduation, whether that be college, military, or the workforce. The seniors would like to thank Ms. Marto for all her help this year. This Friday and Saturday at 7:00, the Rogers Theater Company will be performing the musical Legally Blonde. Right now, they're actually practicing, practicing that in the auditorium, and they would really appreciate it if you could come out and support them. Tickets are $5 for students and $10 for general admission. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, are we ready for 4.4 now? Okay, resolution on gun-free schools.
Yeah, the Tiverton, Middletown, and East Greenwich School Committees have already adopted this particular resolution, which is endorsed by both the Rhode Island School Committee Association and the Rhode Island Superintendent's Association, and is to keep concealed carry guns out of our schools. Shall I read the resolution?
Does anyone want it read?
You do have copies of the laws on line. But it essentially gives the...
Why don't you just read the resolve?
I'll read the resolve, it says, "Now therefore be it resolved that the Newport School Committee respectfully requests the Rhode Island General Assembly to support 2015-H5861 and 2015-S0743, and any and all legislative proposals that would disallow non-law enforcement to carry concealed firearms onto school grounds."
Is that a motion?
I move that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Discussion. I'm assuming that these were recommended, since they were on the agenda, you recommended these?
Yes, the, the resolution has been adopted by other school committees, and it was forwarded to our school committee, and the recommendation is to adopt the resolution.
And it, all in favor of the motion? Do we have a motion?
Yes, I move.
Yes, who seconded it?
Sandra.
I seconded, I seconded it.
Okay, it's been moved in second, any further discussion? Mr. Hanau?
Just for the record, I didn't read the two laws, so I'm gonna not vote, because I didn't read the laws, so they're specified as a House and a Senate, and I apologize for not seeing this, to read them, but I can't vote without knowing what I'm voting for, so I am going to be a no vote on this. I understand the spirit of it, but without looking at the law, I always vote that I know what I'm voting on, so I don't really know what I'm voting on.
Okay, they are, they are both bills, that there's a bill and a compa- a bill in the House and a companion bill in the Senate.
Companion bill in the Senate, and there has been considerable discussion in the press.
And there will be hearings, so you'll get a chance to...
I apologize.
No problem. All in favor of the vo- of the, of the vote to adopt the resolution? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One, two, three. Motion?
Who's the three?
One, two.
I didn't vote.
No, he's an abstention.
Oh, he's an abstention.
I'm a no vote.
Okay.
So it's...
I thought you said we're voting no.
No, I said I'm not voting.
Not voting. So there's...
So the motion passes.
I apologize.
The motion passes, no problem.
Thank you very much.
Resolution...
Three, four, two.
Number 4.7.
What's that, when did that?
We passed the resolutions when we gave the awards to the principal and the teacher of the year. So the next resolution is 4.7, the Susan Farmer Award.
Madam Chair, I recommend the resolution, and I'd like to hand it over to Kathy Silva.
Kathy?
Okay, this resolution is honoring the Susan L. Farmer Award winner, and that happens to be our very own Senate President, Teresa Piverweed. Teresa's not here this evening because she's doing the business of the state, and she's also not aware of the resolution. It will be presented to her Thursday night at a reception, but just since we have a good number of women here, I'll read a little bit of it. The Women's Fund of Rhode Island was organized in 2001 and set forth on its mission to invest in women and girls in our state through research, advocacy, and strategic partnerships to eliminate gender inequity through systematic change. And whereas in 2014, the Women's Fund established the Susan L. Farmer Award to acknowledge Susan Farmer's dedication to the people of Rhode Island and her distinction of having been the first female statewide office holder when elected to the position of Secretary of State in 1982. And whereas the Susan L. Farmer Award is presented to a citizen who has supported the ideals and mission of the Women's Fund by striving to eliminate gender inequity, and whereas in 2014, the Women's Fund has named Senate President, M. Teresa Piverweed, the second honoree and first female recipient of the prestigious Susan L. Farmer Award for her leadership role as the first female president of the Rhode Island Senate, and for her strong support for the state's temporary caregivers insurance, which is a top priority of the Women's Fund. Now therefore be resolved that the School Committee of the City of Newport hereby recognizes and congratulates Senate President, M. Teresa Piverweed, a lifelong resident of Newport, a graduate of Rogers High School, Providence College, and the Catholic University of Law School, and receiving the award, and in recognition of her achievements as both an attorney and senator, and her leadership and de- and dedication to the goal of equal treatment for all our citizens regardless of gender. Basically, that's it, and it will be presented to her Thursday evening.
Is there any, is there a motion?
I will move that it be adopted.
Second.
It's been moved in second, let the resolution be adopted. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Okay, reports from the superintendent and staff.
My reports are, I'm just asking that the committee accept my reports I've presented. Carrie Clark is here, if you'd like to have any conversation with Carrie, but Carrie, our school-based coordinator, is here this evening. We have a lot going on, as the report shows, in Career and Tech, and final applications and all have to be in by tomorrow, and then we're set, starting to set up the schedules for next year, and we're, we and the team is Carrie Clark, Chris Fisher, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Booth, Jay Booth, and me are sitting down, and we're reviewing curriculum, scheduling, and getting ready for next year. So we do have a lot going on, and you'll see through the efforts of this team, our students are getting a lot of field trips, visiting lots of businesses, we're starting to set up various discussions about internships for the future, so there's a lot going on. And I will defer to Vice Chair, Mr. Hanau, who heads the Subcommittee for NACTAC, if he has any further comments on this.
No, that just, we, a lot of great things are happening in NACTAC. I had a brief conversation with Carrie, and as expected, she had great news all around, so I won't steal any of her thunder if she wants to speak on it specifically, but I just want to state that there's some really good things happening in the Career and Technical Center, and we couldn't do it without the staff, especially someone like Carrie herself, who is our anchor point at this point in time. I think Jay, you would agree with that. Jay Booth is doing an awful lot of work, as well as Colleen and Chris, but I think our shining star right now would have to be Carrie. Thank you.
Yes. I would just like to say, that report that you wrote was just glowing. It's the most complete report of any, any department that I've ever seen. It was great, it was great, and if you'd like to mention anything that's moving especially close that you want to talk about, the mic is yours.
I really just came to support all the great things that were going on. For our own support, but just, there are a lot of great things, a lot of great partnerships going on, a lot of great opportunities for other funding sources other than...
David is having a fit. You're not getting any cam, any face time.
I wasn't really planning to say anything, but I just wanted to come out and support Jamie and all of our, you know, all the accolades that we've gotten recently in the whole district, but there are a lot of great things happening at NACTAC and Rogers, and I can't even begin to list them all, because so much has happened in the last couple of weeks, as evidenced by all the people that were here tonight. So a lot of great things happening for NACTAC, a lot of wonderful opportunities and partnerships that I think are gonna really set us up to be very successful, and our students to be very successful. So, again, I didn't come to talk about my own report, but there are a lot of wonderful things happening, and I really appreciate all of your support, so thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions about any of the reports before we move on to the consent agenda?
We have, we do have a presentation for digital literacy, just to know, it's under the superintendent's report. It's a five-minute show and tell, so that the committee is aware of the work that's going on in digital literacy. I also, at this time, I am going to Carrie, and especially Dr. Booth, a very modest, but I do want to let you know, Dr. Booth, I am gonna, why don't you share some good news we just recently received, since Dr. Booth is responsible for writing these?
No, I'm not.
Just, we...
Just, we just found out this week that the grant that we applied to McBean Foundation for a new NACTEC van has been awarded to us. So NACTEC will now have their own 15-passenger bus, it's an official, you know, all the regulation bus, and that check should be coming very shortly, so we will be getting a new van just for our NACTEC.
But there's more, but there's more.
Oh, well, the little, the grant for the Lowe's Toolbox, which was actually our STEM teachers in, at Pell School wanted an outside classroom, so they came up with this grant, and between the carpentry and our STEM teachers, we wrote a grant, and we were, found out we got a check for $5,000 for that. So that'll start next, they'll start the preparation, but in September, the carpentry will prefab it and build it over at Pell. It's really a pavilion, it's like a little gazebo, so the kids will be able to have classes outside. So it's great, we're moving and combining elementary and high school and our NACTEC and our STEM students, so it's great collaboration.
And we have two more that we're not able to announce, but we just want you to stay tuned. We can't tell those. No, we can't, we've been, stay tuned, end of the week, I think you're gonna hear something.
Okay, she loves the Tardos.
Chrissy, I pulled that up, do you want to talk a little bit about how you did it?
Do you want to introduce Chrissy?
I'm sorry.
We had professional development this year through the Harrington School of Digital Media at URI, through our Title I funding, and we chose teachers, asked for volunteers, but also recommendations from principals, for teachers who might be able to help us with the technology implementation at each schools. Actually, our Teacher of the Year was one of the teachers at Thompson, Jen Robinson, and Chrissy Corny is a special educator at Pell School, and they have done so many cool projects and had a whole showcase, and so we asked them to just give a little five minutes of what they've been doing. So Chrissy's gonna do it tonight, and then we'll have someone next month, too.
So will I be able to go over there?
Or you can tell me, and I can do it.
I like that. Can you hear me? Yeah? Okay. So I've been, well, first of all, I'm so excited to be here, this is fun, and I can't wait to show off what we did here at Pell. So this is a flipgrid, and this is something that I learned during my digital literacy PD. You ask a question, and then people are able to respond back, and it's all through video. So a lot of the teachers are hesitant to use the digital tools because it's a little scary, it's different, we're unfamiliar with it. So we thought it'd be fun to do like a Pell Challenge, and this was around Christmas time, so we asked students what their name was and their holiday tradition, their favorite holiday tradition. This could promote, we were thinking like Pell community, because we're all kind of recently combined into one school. So there's a ton of people, kindergartners, fourth graders, if you want to click on one or two.
God bless you.
Hi, my name is Angelina, and my favorite holiday is Christmas.
My name is Sarah, and I'm Chinese, but I'm Chinese.
Hi, my name is Valerie Johnson, and my favorite holiday is Christmas, and my favorite holiday tradition is buying Chinese food for dinner so I don't have to cook.
Hi, my name is Kevin. My favorite holiday tradition is Christmas because it's very exciting.
So this was a nice way to promote, you know, community, but also, oh, sure. Sorry. So this was a nice way to promote community, but also to allow people to learn about one another. There's lots of paraprofessionals and custodians and everybody, we don't know each other, so this was just a fun little way. Additionally, I'm the behavior support teacher at the elementary level, and a big part of my program is about reflecting on your day, your successes, and then your goals for the future day. So this is the behavior sheet that my students have, and it's, they can earn points for their day, and then on the back, they write their successes and their goal for tomorrow. So it can be a little dry and torturous at the end of the day, to be completely honest, because you're tired and they want to go home. So I was trying to figure out, how can I engage the students, motivate them in a different way? So they're able to now reflect through their video if they choose to, so this is providing student choice. And the reflections, I've noticed, have become more in-depth and have been really meaningful for the students. So here are a couple of them.
Today I was in a bad mood because I was quiet, and I was doing my thing, I was doing everything that we do. I was doing everything that we're supposed to do, I was dancing, I was being respectful to the teacher. I went to the stand my seat, and fuck you.
And to me, that's fine, I mean, he reflected on his day.
Today, today I was being respectful and listening to the teacher when they, in the morning.
Just in the morning, not afternoon.
You said it, not me.
Did anybody misbehave?
Well, that's what their goal is, so they, some of them, you'll see them flapping their sheet in front of the camera by accident, and they're looking at what they wrote or their points, so we kind of leave comments, so then they can really, you know, if they need reminders about what they struggled in. So that's it, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to share, these things, they're tools, they're learning, they're sharing with each other, and so more and more, we're starting to see this being implemented in the classrooms, and it's really great. So Chrissy, thank you, and Jen, I know you two are part of the gang, and we'll see probably in the future their work, but I just, at one point, the committee had said, you know, what are they learning, what is going on? And we thought if we just gave you little snippets like this, like three minutes, each month of something, then you'd see what was going on in our PD. So thank you for the time.
Okay. Five point, six point, consent agenda. Is there a motion?
We have the reports from the superintendent.
That's what we just did.
We didn't do all of them. Five, we do our financing?
Joan doesn't...
5.7?
Right, Joan doesn't, Joan doesn't have a report tonight because she's putting everything together for tomorrow's meeting. Am I correct? Yes.
5.8?
Right, she was instructed to get ready for a Thursday, Wednesday, sorry, thank you.
5.8, progress update?
Again, if there's any questions on the goals of where we are, you'll see the one area, most of the areas, as far as your goals for the year are, you know, moving forward, green. We do, in the finance area, we're still doing, looking at collaborating with other agencies, it's turned green, we're getting more grant money and collaborations, and also, we're still working on the budget. We do have creating a plan for future years to include triplet, you'll notice we put that in orange, it's on hold. And let me keep going, just highlights. And the three-to-five-year comprehensive budget forecast with the City of Newport, we're working on that in the small groups that we're doing with, you know, the acting city manager and the director of finance, but of course, ours are just going to be recommendations to you, and as a school committee, you'll decide if you want to collaborate and work, and how you want to work with the city council. So the updates and the lists that you're getting on some ideas on how to work together are continuing.
I didn't know if the superintendent had reports on 5.5 and 5.6. I don't know if she wanted to share something on those.
No, 5.5 and 5.6, I believe they say there are no report this month for those. I'm sorry, it's on the online.
Facilities report?
There's no report for facilities this month.
Consent agenda. Is there anyone who would like to move any item from the consent agenda?
Yes. I'd like to move the personnel, some of the personnel agenda items into closed session. And I would have to see someone's list, we just had a power failure over here, to see which ones.
Sure.
I'll just say the number, right?
Right.
Well, you don't want to do it right this minute, do you? Can we do it at the end of the meeting?
No, she wants...
It's up to you.
Okay, so I'd like to pull out, see if there's any, I'd like to pull out the transfer, and I'd like to pull out the appointment of, for discussion of support specialists at TMS, and I think that's the only two, yes.
I'll second that.
Pardon?
Need to pull the resignation too.
No, because those were asked to be done in open session.
That, the request was to have that in open session.
All right, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Minus the items that were mentioned.
So moved.
What are the items?
The transfer and the Thompson Middle School.
Support specialist.
Support specialist.
Madam Chair, point of order, please. If we approve the, I'll wait for your ruling.
What?
May I proceed with my point of order?
Yes.
If we approve everything else on the agenda besides what Mrs. Boland asked to be taken off, we will effectively not be allowing a public discussion of one of the items on the agenda, a resignation that was asked to be a public discussion. So we should not approve everything besides what Mrs. Boland asked to be pulled out. We should leave, there is an item on the agenda this evening which was requested to be a public agenda. So I, as such, I, well, my point of, my point of order is over. I would like to move, Madam Chair, that...
You may amend the motion.
I'll amend Mrs. Boland's, thank you, Mrs. Sylvia, I'll amend Mrs. Boland's motion so that resignation number one on this evening's personnel agenda, or on this evening's consent agenda regarding personnel be taken off as well. I would ask for a second, Madam Chair.
It's been moved in second. All in favor of those items that were asked to be removed for consideration, be removed for consent agenda, is, would you please indicate approval?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I'll now entertain a motion for the approval of the remaining items on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So item... Okay. We'll take first the personnel action on appointment.
Madam Chair, point of order.
Yes.
We just approved the personnel actions absent the resignation for public session and the potential to go into executive session. So I don't think we need to approve anything regarding personnel action approval.
What we need to do is...
There was a transfer.
We need to entertain the resignation.
Okay, the resignation is at the bottom, okay. Commission, Superintendent, would you make your recommendation here, please, so we can open it up for discussion? The resignation?
Right, I had recommended to accept the resignation of the athletic director, and I moved that forward.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation of the superintendent. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, discussion. Thank you.
All right, so, you know, Mr., and we can say his name now, because Mr. Colley, we can talk about it in person, correct? Yes, he's here. So Mr. Colley is our, you know, athletic director here at the high school. In the last six years you've been in the job, it's been, you know, he's done an incredible job. It is a tremendous, tremendous amount of work, that job. It has grown, too, to a point where there's, involves all kinds of things now that weren't there six years ago, like all of the training for AED, training for concussion, you have to keep, you have to train everyone around you for that. It's also, now, all things are done on the computer in terms of getting the histories for all the kids, keeping up with that, so the job has really morphed into a lot. And I know that, you know, six years ago, when he took this on, it's a scary thing to take on, really, because it's such a huge commitment. And I know that now, you know, as your families grow and change, you know, it's a hard thing because the way the contract's written, you are really kind of, once you're in the position, it's very difficult to get out of the position. And I, for one, would like to see where we could, you know, and that's just not the way it should be, you know, they should be able to get, and right now, I mean, we, if he were to resign straight out, he would, he might, he'd be in jeopardy of not being able to come back full-time. Right. And that, and that, obviously, for a person with a family, that, you know, it's not something that can happen. I personally would like to see, like, I'd like to maybe table this, because I don't, if he resigns tonight with the condition that he's in full-time, I would, I would like to see where he, we could work something out with the union so that he, you know, maybe we take this and make this an administrative job, or, I'm not sure, you know, I don't know exactly how we go about doing this, but I just would like to be able to see, you know, something happen so that, you know, we could find, you know, if, in fact, he wants to resign, that we're, you know, able to do that and fulfill his needs, too, you know. Am I saying that correctly or not? I see your face kind of funny. So I'm just saying that I, so I do not, I would rather wait until we figure out, you know, you know, I just, I guess I don't want, I'm afraid to have him resign pending something, because we've never done that before either. We've never had a resignation pending some condition, but I'm totally in favor of what he's trying to do, is what I'm saying. You know, I'm totally in favor of him trying to, you know, maybe not have this position anymore. Does that make sense? I'm having some trouble.
I would like to comment. I, I would hate to see us lose a darn good director of athletics, but I totally understand his reason for wanting to resign. He's actually doing two full-time jobs. Since Mr. Colley took over, and just tonight, how many teams did we add to his workload?
I know.
Okay? It's not just managing the schedule for these teams. You have to make sure the athletes have all of the requirements that are medically, we have to keep them, keep on them for academic eligibility. And then he's teaching three classes, four, two, two. Okay. But still, that's a lot to ask of one person. I would like to see it as a full-time position, but we are, well, we know where we are. I, we can't keep him from resigning, but I would like to ask him to reconsider and hold his resignation for a few more weeks. But I would like to ask him to reconsider and hold his resignation for a few more weeks. And give us some time to talk about this in committee and see what we might be able to do. That would be my request.
Madam Chair.
Yes, David.
Thank you. There's, there's a motion on the floor, it's been seconded, so there's a vote that is inevitable this evening unless the motion and the second are rescinded. And/or if a motion is made to amend the original motion. I agree with you, I agree with Mrs. Boland. Mr. Colley is a fine athletic director. So I find myself in a difficult position. If the motion that ultimately appears before us for a vote is to accept his resignation with or without conditions, I'll vote against it. So I would like to also see, as the chair has said and as Mrs. Boland has indicated, a delay in the resignation. First of all, I cannot accept a resignation with conditions, it's a resignation or not. So again, Mr. Colley is a fine athletic director. And I, I simply won't vote to accept the resignation today. We can't force him, as you said, we can't force anyone to do what they don't want to do. But I think we're in a catch-22 here, and it is up to my colleagues and is ultimately up to Mr. Colley. But I would propose that we, what's the rush? I would propose we wait.
I would like, if, if Mr. Colley would like to speak, I'd like to give them the opportunity to speak before we take any action.
And if he'd be willing to.
Do you want to?
I'm willing to answer questions.
Okay.
I would just like to add that, you know, I, I'm definitely in favor, you know, he, of making sure that he has a full-time position, whatever that, you know, takes.
But we can't guarantee that.
I know, with the conditions on it, we can't, so that's a problem.
David.
Madam Chair, if I might, of our athletic director, Mr. Colley. I have a couple of questions because I, I am not so inclined to state that I, I know exactly what you're talking about. So I appreciate your dedication, your hard work. Obviously, our Vikings are excellent. I remember meeting you back in the Thompson basketball court area a few years ago, cheering on kids, my kids didn't play the basketball. But in any event, I would ask that, if this is something that you so desire, then I will accept your resignation, you know, regretfully, I will state that. But I, I also want to ask of maybe the, the superintendent or the chair, probably the superintendent, are we working on something with Mr. Colley? Because I believe maybe we might be a little backwards as far as this committee. Usually, we were just told earlier that we get a recommendation from you, the superintendent, on an action, whether a position be made full-time or part-time. Is there more vetting that needs to be done? I certainly support Mr. Colley in any of his decisions. Family comes number one. That to me is beyond a shadow of a doubt. A lot of things we love and cherish, we just can't, we don't have the time. As our children get older, the demands at home become harder and it becomes quite difficult. So I certainly wouldn't ask the man against his will. But if, if there's something that, I mean, that, it's not, it's more of a comment than it is a question, but if it's something you really want, I will support whatever it is you are, because you've supported the Newport School Department with your time over the last years, and I respect whatever it is you wish.
So, may I?
Yes.
So my understanding is, Mr. Colley would like to be, us all to be put on notice, that he would like to step down as the AD. But he will only step down as the AD, just as in our department chairs, what happens with department chairs with our contract language, if there is a full-time position available to him. He does not want to give up full-time status with the Newport School Department.
Correct.
So in order to enable others to be aware, perhaps within the school, most likely, that this is what he wants to do, he's putting forward his request tonight to step down as AD. He will continue in that role if necessary, but he just wants everyone to be on notice that he would really like to step down. And if there's some other person or personnel within the building, or if there's a way in the future, if his position becomes full-time and AD is in a different place and space, and not necessarily maybe with a staff person, he's willing to do that. But I think out of respect for the community, and I appreciate it, and his dedication, he wants to put us on notice to let us know that he would like to step down.
Madam Chair.
Yes, David.
Uh, we'll, you'll, uh, yield to Ms. Larry.
No, I'll, no, I'll recognize you first.
Question for the athletic director. Mr. Colley, two questions. Do you feel in any way that you're being forced out of this position? Number one. Number two, and please elaborate if so. Number two, if the position were a full-time, non-teaching athletic director position, would you be comfortable in that position? Would that be a position you'd like? Thank you.
First question, do I feel like I'm being forced out? I just feel that the way the job specs are currently and my personal situation, as if you've seen the letter, I, I've tried to, to make things work and some, someone's always suffering, whether it be myself, my family, or the, the students or coaches. So that's where that came from. No, not forced out. Full-time, although intriguing, outside of the union, I know of other athletic directors that do have that. And when times are good, times are good. But when times aren't, that's when they, they fear how things can go. And sometimes, unfortunately, for sports, people get the wrong message that it's, you'll hear winning's not the only thing, but sometimes if you get the, the right group of people, that's all they want to hear about, and job security would be a concern. So I'd have to, I would think on that, but I wouldn't be able to answer that question right now.
All right. Follow, follow-up question, Madam Chair, please. Mr. Colley, if you were required to resign your position as a member of, of the union, or if you were required to resign your membership in TAN or in, in the NEA, with the condition, of course, that there was a full-time athletic director position available to you.
Mm-hmm.
And I think I know this, but I want to make sure, would you accept that?
I can't answer that tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Colley.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I have a couple of questions, mostly to the superintendent. How's this affect us financially with these stipulations? All of a sudden, we're getting people to retire, they asked for stipulations last year, people this year retire and ask for stipulations. Yet we did two music director last year, with based on something would happen.
Oh, yes, yes. He asked, he asked to be.
Yet all of a sudden, people are asking for stipulations, and we got to be cognizant of our budget when we do this. So how's this affect us if he has these conditions in the, his agreement, if it was approved tonight?
I don't think it, I really don't think it has any impact because he can't, he can't move unless there is some kind of opening that allows him to teach a full, a full schedule. And right now, there is not. And with layoffs, it will probably make it even harder for that to happen.
I think we're going down a slippery slope here, entertaining all these things. I mean, last year, we had, we had first wait till August, he said he'd retire in June and, but till some February and comes back in August. And that's fine, but we're starting to entertain all that now.
Right.
I don't know if that's a good idea for a committee, so I personally am not in favor of that.
Okay.
The second thing is that districts nowadays seem to be going, I want to know two of them, maybe we should do a little study of this, they seem to be heading in a district of making athletic directors part of the administration, not part of the union. And I'm not sure how the contract reads. I know Boston does it, I know West Fork does it. They're also picking up retirees doing these positions for about forty, fifty thousand dollars, not paying any benefits. So I think is, we need to look at the contract too before we go any further with that, you know? So I, I can't support it pending the conditions.
Okay.
I have another question. If you resign as athletic director, what does that leave you with? A part-time position?
That, I don't know if this is the, the form for that discussion, but what I'm hearing from the superintendent committee is not how I entered into the job when I signed on. So that's the, what need to be vetted out a little bit, that it was not when I sat with Jack. And, you know, his question to me was whether or not I could handle this job with two young children, younger children at the time. And this is at the White House, in his office, round table, Frank Ames was to my left, and he asked me that and said, I don't know, but I wouldn't be here if I didn't think I could do it. And I asked to think it over the next, and answered him the next day, said I would. But the question I asked of him at the time was that if this is something after a year I couldn't handle, the job, they didn't like the job I was doing, or whether it be some point in time down the road, am I allowed to go back into a full-time teaching position? And his answer to me was yes, but not in the capacity you have, which at that time I was full-time teacher at Thompson Middle School.
So we'd have to wait until something opened up?
Right.
That's not my understanding. And I haven't seen documentation or hasn't been presented to me otherwise.
Yeah, is there written agreement to that?
Nothing was in writing?
No. I'm not, in writing, no.
No.
What I saw, no, to that nature. But again, I haven't seen anything in writing otherwise saying you can't.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes.
Question for the athletic director. Mr. Colley, is there a contract that you're, you are currently abiding by and that the department is abiding by regarding your position?
Yeah, it's part of the Teach Association Newport contract.
What, what is the TAN? I apologize for having to ask this of you. I think the more appropriate person to ask this of is legal counsel for the committee. Mr. Colley, what does your contract say if you were to terminate your position as athletic director when you want to terminate that position? What is it that this school department owes you?
From what I've looked at, at the contract, and even to step further, our union bylaws, I see no documentation stating anything of that nature.
It's ambiguous, the contract?
Exactly.
It's up to interpretation.
You got it.
I understand and appreciate the conditions you're bringing forth, and I understand why you're bringing forth.
So those are written there again to protect myself, is that it's not a straight resignation, so.
Becky?
First of all, if, if, understanding that Mr. Colley didn't get it in writing, but I, if Mr. Colley says it happened, I'm, I'm a hundred percent behind him that I, and I'm sure all of us here that, that that was said at that meeting. And I think that I would like to have our legal counsel, like, look into this and try to give us some, some ideas of how we can, you know, make this happen, because this needs to happen.
You, Mike, you've mentioned a couple of times now in the past few minutes that the, pretty much the job specs that you agreed to have been, shall we say, expanded? In other words, more responsibility's been put on.
That's one word.
Oh, yeah.
So is there, and I'm just, this is like, at the top of my head now, if we go back and re-address, you know, revisit those original job specs and say, hey, you know, stick with that. You know, I've never been one of the people running around with the contract in my hand either, but it's, sometimes you can, and we see a lot of people in this system, more and more and more duties are put upon, and after a while, you feel like you're just going to explode, you know? So I'm, I'm just wondering if, as you mentioned about working with TAN and administration, to really revisit that, those job specifications, that's just one thought that could make you feel less stretched out and being pulled in ten different directions. That's what it sounds like to me.
David.
Madam Chair, I know there's a motion on the floor to, to move the resignation, and I understand that the conversation has been around that Mr. Colley is just basically at this point wanting to put us on, on notice. So I know that there's a motion on the floor that we might need to tend to, but also, could I make a, a recommendation, if I may?
You may.
I, I would recommend that, that the superintendent approach TAN along with Mr. Colley's concerns and see if she can come back to us, us with an appropriate resolution to this with the TAN officials and Mr. Colley and the appropriate vetting process so that we might make a more informed, appropriate decision on this. And we fully understand and appreciate Mr. Colley's position. And I don't know if the motion would be in order to table this until it comes back at this point in time.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Mr.
My friend, the vice chair has an excellent, excellent point of view. There's a motion on the table and there's a second. Can I ask for a point of clarification within my point of order? Who made the motion and who seconded it?
I made the motion.
You made the motion, you can rescind your motion. And you can, you can ask, if, if my Roberts rules are correct, you can rescind your motion and you can put forward a, a further motion.
Madam Chair. We have a parliamentarian here.
We don't have a legal counsel here, Madam Chair.
I appointed her as parliamentarian.
But he can rescind the motion, but Mr. Colley.
Yes.
Based on your letter, if there's, if a full-time position is not available in September, you would remain as athletic director and teach the two classes?
I would continue to.
Because it says.
Do my job, but I'd have to probably make some significant changes. There's, as any teacher does, they always go a little further than what they need, and I'd have to maybe trim some things back that I can't do, which is, is it, it's, it's a stress for a lot of different people and I need to, to make some changes on that. And, and by doing that, I know that someone's going to suffer. In this case, it's not going to be my family, but it would be the job that I have to do. And to, it, it could end up actually being more of a financial burden that way on the school because you have to have supervisors at all games, and I try and cover as many as I can not to go blow through a budget. There, there, there are many different things, and I've said there's very few people, I think, in this state that really have an idea of what goes on day in, day out. And I don't say that to, just each district has one, each one is, is different in how the job is handled.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
The parliamentarian has said that.
David, she still has the floor.
Would you have a problem if we continued, did not accept it at this point, like, continued it for two months while maybe, as Colleen said, if word gets out, maybe somebody else would apply, you wouldn't be in a bind?
Here's, contract in the district views this as a ten-month position, the school, the regular teaching year plus twenty days. And it, it's essentially in most cases year-round with meetings and things that happen of that nature, that school may not start here till the day after Labor Day, but meetings and all that will start first week of August. And prior to that, I would have meetings, whether it be with coaches, prospective students coming in and ordering, things of that nature that have to go forth. So that's where I, I put the date of June 30th. That should allow me to hopefully, to the best of my ability, put a wrap on this year. But at the same time, as we speak, next year's already starting to roll and try and get something solid foundation in place, if, whether it be I continue it as if, it would be my job, but I'd also like to leave it in the hands of the person that would have to take over, that they can step in and not have to start from essentially square one. So two months, I think is, you know, I'd stick by the original date that I have on there, would be best for the district.
May I ask a question of the superintendent?
Yes.
Was it your recommendation that we go ahead and accept it as written?
Yes.
Yes, I wanted to honor Mr. Colley's request.
Okay.
Is that still your desire, Mr. Colley?
Yes, because I, I also, from a TAN standpoint, I know you're going to reach out to them, but I also know that any sort of change in the contract would most likely legal could. but I also know that any sort of change in the contract would most likely, legal could clarify, but require that the job be posted. So I am fully aware, when I started this process two years ago, that if there was a change to the job, that it would be something I'd have to reapply for and let everybody else have that same chance.
Okay. David?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The motion is on the floor from Ms. Hanos. We're told by the parliamentarian, who I respect, and her opinions mean quite a bit to me, so I won't argue parliamentary procedure. I would suggest that if, if the vice chair were to, since the parliamentarian says he cannot rescind the motion that he made, that he made.
I can withdraw it.
I didn't say he couldn't.
Thought you said he, he could not rescind his motion.
I did not say that.
No, she said I could.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kathy, Ms. Sylvia, I thought you said he could not.
No.
This is why I respect your knowledge of parliamentary procedure more than anyone's. So he can rescind it. If he wants to rescind it, let's rescind it. If not, then the motion that's on the table that's been seconded is still a motion to accept the resignation with conditions.
Right.
Am I correct?
I'd like to move that we go forward with the question. Move the question.
The question has been moved. The motion is to accept the resignation as.
Well, Madam Chair, the, the question is to move the, the motion forward. That's a debatable motion in and of itself.
Yes, okay.
So is there further debate?
No, it either fails or, it either passes or fails. You don't discuss it.
It passes or fails to, with, point of order.
To move forward. To move the question, you call for a vote and it either passes.
To move the, to move the question with.
That's what I was doing.
She's calling all those in favor, that's what she's asking.
No, 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 point, point of order, Madam Chair, please, if I might. A, moving the question is not to move the question immediately, it's whether we should end debate within a timeframe.
That's basically what it is to end.
So what is the timeframe that we get to discuss?
You don't.
You don't. You vote.
That's, Madam Chair, I, I appeal the ruling of the chair.
Who are you appealing to?
You just said I don't. I'm appealing to the committee, I appeal the ruling of the chair. We have a motion to table, or, I'm sorry, a motion to move the question is not a motion to move the question immediately, it's a motion to stop debate on the question.
Right.
So I appeal, I appeal the ruling of the chair.
If we stop debate, then we vote.
Madam Chair, I respectfully ask for your answer, your ruling on the question of whether a motion to move the question is a motion to move the question immediately or a motion to set a timeframe on how long the question can continue to be debated.
My request to move the question is to end, end discussion and go forward with the vote.
And with due respect, I appreciate that, but the motion to move forward on a vote, the motion to move the vote requires, if, if there is a yes or a no, it's not a motion on, it's not, I should say, a question of whether, it's not a question of whether to move, it's not a question of whether to have the vote immediately, it's a question of whether to set a, a timeframe on the debate. Are we going to live by Roberts rules or are we not?
Yes, we are, and I have them in my purse, and I'm telling you.
Well, then I would.
This is not debatable, we either vote to go forward or we continue discussion.
No, the, the, well, that's why I'd like, that's like I.
That's why I'm trying to move the vote. We have a motion to move the question. All in favor?
I'm sorry, is the, Madam Chair, is the question, point of order, is the question whether to move to end debate or whether to move the question before?
Yes, yes.
All right, so what is the, if we move to end debate, what is the timeframe that we have to end debate? We don't end debate immediately.
Moving the question is to end it immediately.
It is not, it is not. It is a motion to end debate after what the body agrees is a proper amount of time to discuss. You usually have 15 minutes to continue. You're going to say.
We have not set up those kind of ground rules.
All right, I, I, you know, with all due respect, I, I don't think that.
With all due respect, we need to move this question.
Yes.
Get the vote and move forward.
Madam Chair, we are not abiding by Roberts rules.
Well.
I will vote, and I will vote on whatever motion is in front of us, but.
You vote whenever you want, okay? The vote, the motion has been made and seconded to move the question.
What question, please, Madam Chair?
Close debate.
Is there a problem, Mrs. Flowers? Am I asking too many questions? I think we are supposed to be here to ask questions.
It's not Mrs. anyway.
Well.
The motion is.
Ms. Flowers, I'm sorry.
The motion is whether or not to close debate, that's the vote.
Yes.
That's it.
Who seconded, by the way?
I heard a second, I don't know who did it.
Who seconded, boss?
I think several of us seconded.
David Hanos did.
David seconded.
Yeah.
And I'm trying to get a vote.
Okay.
Do we close debate? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Becky, what did you do?
I'm dinging, because I just wanted to say one thing real quick, then I think it counts.
Okay, two-thirds.
Two-thirds vote.
Point of order, Madam Chair, can the, can the record please reflect that vote?
Of course it will.
I have a 3-3-1 vote?
No, that's not the vote. Can the record please reflect that vote?
One, two, three.
Four in favor, three opposed.
In favor.
Four in favor, three opposed. Thank you.
Continue debate.
So is there more discussion since?
Continue to.
I believe my colleague wanted to continue discussing it, but you've shut off debate. You all have shut off debate.
No, we have not. The motion failed.
The motion failed.
It requires a two-thirds vote.
I'm sorry.
Okay, Becky.
All I want to say is that I, I spoke at the beginning saying I did not want to accept a resignation with, you know, rider on it, but I'm going to support him because I absolutely support Mr. Colley tonight, so. That's all I wanted to say.
And I was hoping that he would hold off on his resignation, but I will respect his, his desires.
Madam Chair, could we have the superintendent look into the issue of possibly making this administration position with, with the, with the council, Ms. Carroll in this case, because she's doing our contracts?
Okay.
I, I think this is a good opportunity to move in that direction at this point in time, make this administration position, and we control a lot more than where we're at now.
And the, the demands of the job have, have multiplied tremendously.
I'm not saying enough, Ms. Gaines. I'm not saying enough. I'm saying, but, see, right now, it's.
You're right. It should be a different, it should be in a different category.
A lot of towns also is, is, no, I shouldn't say a lot, I know two, probably more, maybe it's not, they're starting to use retirees peoples for doing these positions like that, you know? Becomes a full-time job for them, but, you know, it's something to look at.
That's something you'd have to weigh up for.
You know, instead of $130,000, it becomes a $60,000, $70,000 job, you know?
Well.
Okay. Is there any more discussion on the original motion? All in favor of, of the motion to accept the resignation?
With regret.
With, with regret.
Madam Chair, point of order, has the motion been amended to accept it with regret or is it what we see before us? I mean, the motion, there's no motion before us to accept it with regret, there's a motion before us to accept the resignation with conditions. I don't see anything before us with regret.
David, would you please repeat your motion?
Mr. Carlin, I did make a motion that if it were the wishes of Mr. Colley, I would accept his resignation with reg, regret.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, I appreciate that, thank you, Madam Chair. Can we please have that in a, is that the formal vote, motion to amend the original motion or to amend the original?
That was the original motion.
That's not the original motion.
That's the motion he made.
He made that.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't say the motion, I beg your pardon, Madam Chair and, and Mr. Vice Chair. The action item before us is a very specific action item. Can I ask the vice chair, my good friend, and someone who I will support, can you amend the motion? Madam Chair, am I also bothering you with too many questions?
Yeah, you are.
Okay, I'm asking too many questions.
May I say something? I think what perhaps Mr. Carlin wants to say is that we accept the resignation with the stipulation provided by Mr. Colley in his letter?
No, that was the motion.
Yeah, I, I actually will not vote for that, and I thank you, thank you, Ms. Sylvia. I appreciate, no, thank you very much, I appreciate that very much. I would just ask that the, the action item before us is a very specific action item. If the vice chair would like to amend that action item.
What does he need to amend?
The language in the action item.
Because pending stipulations.
His motion was to, oh, I see what you're saying.
Pending stipulations. If it's not now.
I mean, I mean, maybe I'm not making sense to my colleagues, but, and maybe I'm asking too many questions, as apparently I do, but let's get it right.
Yeah. His job, this makes.
Hey, we're dealing with people's lives here.
I respectfully withdraw my motion and end this, please, quickly. Somebody make the proper motion so we can move forward. Mr. Colley, I feel asked to come out of executive session so that, but I don't think he, he anticipated being put on stage like this. So I'm going to rescind my original motion, I will allow the, the floor to pick up whatever they feel is appropriate.
Madam Chair.
And I apologize, Mr. Colley.
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry. Yes.
The, no, there, I, first of all.
Do you want to move the question?
No, I don't want to, I don't want to move the, I, I'm, do I have the floor or not? I mean, come on. I don't mean to suggest that Mr. Hanos's, the vice chair's suggestion was, was wrong. I completely agree with him. It's what Mr. Colley wants. All I want is the rules of order to be followed. We have an action item before us. Let's amend the item to have the proper language in it. If you don't want to do that.
What item are we amending, David?
Madam Chair, the item before us, the action item before us is a resignation of the athletic director with stipulations or conditions. And the action that the vice chair is asking, with due respect, he pulled his, his question off the table, but it doesn't mirror what the action item on our agenda says. We, we vote on the action item on our agenda or we vote on an amendment to that action item?
Superintendent, would you?
We, we should have a legal counsel here.
Madam Superintendent, School Department.
No, you're the superintendent.
I'm, I'm sorry, Ma. I'm talking to myself now. Madam Chair.
Yes.
Madam Chair, members of the school committee, I respectfully recommend the recommendations of Mr. James Colley, our athletic director, as presented by Mr. Colley.
Madam Chair, I'll move the question to put it to a vote. I move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the question?
Discussion, Madam Chair?
Yes.
No, there is no discussion.
No discussion.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
When you move the question, no discussion.
So just move the question right now.
I'm sorry.
All in favor of the question? Aye.
One, two, three, four.
Five.
Is that five?
Move the question, yeah, five to two.
Five to two, that's three quarters. Now, the, who, the recommendation of the superintendent is to accept the resignation as presented. All, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, is there further discussion?
No, there's no.
All in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye. Sandra?
Opposed?
Aye.
Two. Motion passes.
We apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Colley.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry if you were embarrassed.
I don't think he was embarrassed, I think he's a fine man. He can handle it, he has thick skin.
Um, what was the, transfer?
What, what item is that?
The transfer from TMS Guidance Long-Term Sub.
Excuse me, excuse me, you were holding that for executive session.
For executive session, we're off personnel.
Okay.
They were all done.
So that's it, right?
So now we're on 7-1, I think.
Right.
Time limit?
Mr. Leary.
It's me, 7-1 discussion.
Presentation and discussion.
Discussion, thank you. Just, just for the record, last meeting, we had a, an hour and a 15 minutes, hour and 10 minutes, with two presentations. I had a, one person call me up that watches TV, I'm not sure how many people watched, but one called me up and said that, he watched the council first, it was an hour and a half, and he watched just for an hour and 15 minutes. He says, "It's almost three hours at the TV, and he hasn't seen any business done yet." So he said, "You have a lot of important business to discuss." Now, this person paid attention to business part of the meeting, and he says, "You're spending too much time on these things." So I timed all the ones tonight, out of curiosity, you know, we had six, eight, eight of those things tonight, and every one, except for one, and that was 8.1, 8.2 together, was less than 15 minutes, and that was 17 minutes, but that was 8.1, 8.2 combined. So I was timing indirectly, not with a timer. So I think it's imperative that, you're out, we don't get many people at these meetings, sometimes it kicks you up tonight, you know, but there is a viewing audience out there, and they watch the school committee, one, a council first, and they watch the school committee, and they're spending, they're, if the last meeting was three and a half hours, plus the hour and a half, that's five hours of watching TV to see what's going on. So I think we should limit our presentations to 15 minutes, and if we need to amend, make it a policy, amend it in a two-thirds majority, then we can do it, or we can do a separate meeting, you know?
Is that a motion?
Madam Chair.
No, it's just discussion.
You can't make a comment.
Sandra, then Becky.
Okay. You said the people watched the, and I've gotten a lot of wonderful comments about the presentations. Yeah, they were long. But when you said that we have a lot of business, to me, I'm speaking personally now, that's what our business really is. What goes on in, yeah, what's going on in the, excuse me, what goes on in the classrooms, the presentations that were given tonight, plus the fact that our young people were there. What's not our business, I think, is sometimes, well, I'll restrain myself from that, I'll just restrain myself. I'll talk about that later, but I just think that we probably could work to maybe have a little bit of a tighter presentations, but I think we had spoken, years ago, they would have a couple of meetings a month. I think there was an editorial in one of the papers saying that maybe we should have two meetings, to which I say, "Is that all?" I mean, that would be nice, but perhaps, I don't think we've had enough presentations, perhaps keeping them a little bit closer, I don't know, I myself don't think we really have to go into policy for that, I think it's one of those little unwritten things that, an agreement that could be given.
Becky?
Thank you.
I was just going to say, I mean, oftentimes, like, I remember the night we had the UCOA presentation, in retrospect, we should have just planned an evening. A workshop. A workshop for that. So that's what we just have to, I think, a little more careful, workshops, and I agree with Mr. Leary, you know, like, just kind of tell people ahead of time, you know, try to keep it right at 15, because we, you know, so, and then, and then, absolutely do more workshops, because they're important, too, and have, and I love the kids' presentations.
Is that, any more comment, Bob?
Madam Chair, I would just disagree a little with Mrs., my colleague, Mrs. Flowers here, because my point tonight was that we did eight of those tonight, and every one except for one was under that 15-minute presentation, and I was very proud of the track team and all the other ones, but last month, we had two presentations that took an hour and 15 minutes, or maybe an hour 12 minutes for the exact time. I think that's a little too much for time personally.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Kathy.
I thought the presentations were excellent, and I thoroughly enjoyed them, but I have to agree, knowing all our business was ahead of us, it was a little difficult as the night went on, you know, somehow they can be maybe limited.
Well, I, I, I think the superintendent can work on that with the presentation.
Yeah.
If, if a presentation is 15 minutes or more, then there's only one presentation.
Right, right. Right, right.
But if there are shorter ones, then, you know, we can deal with that.
They were excellent. I was glad we saw them. Just when I got to ten o'clock, I was.
Okay, eight point four, policy, fifty-three hundred.
Okay, this is-
What did I miss?
This is the second reading.
This is the second reading.
Sorry, I jumped the gun here. Seven point two.
Seven point two?
Seven point two.
Yeah, Dave Hanos.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I asked for this discussion item to be put on, because we had a very, we've had very good discussions within our workshops, and some of the folks, at least Ken is here from the Subcommittee for the Finance Review Committee, and he is working with the school. One of the hurdles that we have within the school district here are the legislation that's passed down upon us by the state and federal legislators, and a lot of that legislation is dealt to a municipality without the proper funding mechanism for it. I, for one, am getting a fast-track education that a lot of these things that deal with our budget directly, as well as our friends who are devoting a lot of their spare time to looking at these budget items, also see the disproportionate, and I use that word loosely currently until we discuss this a little bit further, but the disproportionate burden on a community within the State of Rhode Island which follows or exceeds the minimum housing standard of ten percent housing within the city and town. Newport is close to twenty-five percent, which there makes us a very welcoming community. We welcome everybody to this community. We do realize that in certain sectors through, or different demographics, that there's clearly data that shows that the more of, of these housings that we have, there, there tends to be more structured, educational, that needs to go on within the communities with such a huge variation in the demographics, which is us, which is Newport. Then we look at other communities within the State of Rhode Island, which don't necessarily refuse, but they certainly don't follow the standard of, you need to have ten percent of this housing within your community, which then, I do say with confidence disproportionately shifts individuals who may not be able to afford housing into just a few smaller, a few larger communities that are this way. What that does to those communities, not just ours, is it increases the level of structured education that we need to provide, but it does not give us the proper funding mechanism from the state. It does not target each individual dependent on what zip code that child decides to live in, therefore, the money would actually follow the child throughout the state. The state has a funding mechanism, which absolutely probably gives Newport a couple of percentage points more than a neighboring community without as much, but it certainly does not fund it to the level that is needed to support this structured learning. I'm sure it's the same case in other areas of One Socket and Providence. I know Central Falls is completely picked up by the state because of the demographics, and probably Pawtucket, and certainly Providence. So what I am asking for discussion is, I want to be armed with the appropriate numbers and information that we need, so that we can go up as a delegation and sit before the House and Senate Finance, or whomever we need to talk to, as my colleague, Mr. Carlin had recommended in a previous meeting, to go up there and articulate why, as elected officials, we struggle with our budget. Our budget is extremely difficult in Newport due to our demographics. We need to articulate this to our state leaders, so that they can at least get this in the discussion and in the channels. And that's why, Madam Chair, I brought this to the discussion table, because I believe it is very important for communities like ours to fight for our bigger share, for communities who don't follow the state law and have less than ten percent, and sometimes closer to zero percent, of low-income housing, where we well exceed it. We're not going to ask anybody to move out of our district. We are a welcoming community, and, and I am, that is the reason for me asking for this on the discussion item. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm glad you brought it up. It's a topic that needs to be addressed, and as you say, we need to address it at the State House. Unfunded mandates are part of the bane of our existence. And you couple that with a funding formula that doesn't recognize the high-need communities, and, and you've got disaster. So I'm all for going to the State House, ringing on, ringing some, knocking on some doors, and we, we don't even have to wait for a hearing. We can make appointments, right, David?
That is correct.
Talk to these people, request, request a hearing. But we need to be armed when we do it. We need to know what we're talking about. We need to have our facts in hand. So if it means some extra workshops to inform us, I think we ought to be willing to do that. We can get the folks here to Q and A. That, Becky?
I commend Mr. Hanos that this is a huge undertaking, which I will, I'm on board a hundred percent. I would just wait, we probably should wait, in order to cast the district with any more things, till we get the budget done. You know, I just, we might have to wait a couple of weeks, because it's going to take some delving into the, you know, the facts, because you're right, we have to be totally armed.
I'm not sure that the legislature will have time.
We have to fit there, Kathy.
Maybe we have to get the information on our own, then.
Well, we, we can get the information. We have resources through Ryan's. We can get the information, and we can get a workshop. And the Superintendent's Association also has access.
Because do they go on, they go on, well, they don't call it vacation, but when do they?
They recess in June.
Recession in June, so we have to try to make an attempt before that?
Yeah.
Well, they are very busy. Through then, but they will meet periodically.
They will.
The full Senate won't, but committees will sometimes meet. Certainly, individual legislators would meet during the summer with the group.
So shall we proceed to make some plans on that? David, I'll work with you. David, can I enlist your help on this?
Anything you need, absolutely.
Okay. So, and Kathy?
Pardon me?
Yep. Okay. So it'll be another meeting, guys.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, and, and thank you. I, I don't mind doing a little bit more work, because I think it's going to pay off. I, I do realize, I am realistic, that the budget is set. I don't think we're going to make any changes, but I do believe we need to start early, and we need to be well armed, and we need to make continued, very educated arguments to our friends and colleagues that are elected to state office. And I'm sure we'll be able to employ our local legislative agents, at least bring them in on these conversations, to queue them in on what we may need. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Back to action items. Policy eight point four, District Wellness Amendment, second reading.
The second reading, the-
Wait a minute.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I was just-
No, it's the, this policy amendment brings the district wellness policy into compliance with recently passed state and federal legislation regarding school nutrition, and every, all of the recommendations have been incorporated. You had the first reading already, you've all had the opportunity to go over online or printed copy, and this is for the second reading tonight, to make it official.
Becky, would you like to move this?
Yes, I would like to finally move. It's been a long time coming, but it's really, I think it's a strong policy, it's got a lot of backup to it. I had our committee go over it, and took, you know, they spent a lot of time on their own going over it, and, and we incorporated the feedback that they gave us, and so I would like to make the motion to, to accept the new health and wellness policy as, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, in a discussion?
Discussion.
Yes, David?
This is the second reading, Madam Chair?
Yes.
So we adopted the first reading at the last meeting?
Yep.
Did we do so?
We passed, we passed it at the first reading. And sent back some recommendations for corrections.
April fourteenth.
The corrections were made and sent to all the school committee members. And now we have the second reading and adoption.
I'm in favor of, of the policy. I want to vote yes for it. I just want to procedurally check, didn't, didn't Mr. Hanos, or someone stop the first adoption? We didn't have an adoption at the last meeting, did we?
That was the athletic policy. We decided to pull it and not vote on that. We voted on this.
So we adopted, we actually adopted a first reading of something at our last meeting?
This was it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I think this is a, is a good policy, and I intend to vote for it.
It's been moved in second, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion to adopt?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Eight point five, approval of food services one-year renewal contract between Chart Wells and Newport Public Schools. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Or is there a recommendation?
The recommendation is to renew for one year.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
I have a discussion.
David Hanos, then David Carlin.
Just a clarification, maybe through the superintendent, but I did go through this contract. I do know that Chart Wells occupies some space across the way. I did not see in the contract where they are privileged, or, or basically in the lease to remain in there, and my question and concern is being raised that whatever agreement we have, I don't believe there's a contract or a lease with them on that portion. So if, in fact, the NACTAC or the Rogers High School campus needs to reallocate that space, I just want to make sure that we're not going to vote on something right now that is going to preclude us from asking them to vacate a space if it seems to be necessary. I'm not saying it's necessary, but if it's necessary to vacate the space that they're in, so we can put a career and technical class in there, then I just want to make sure that by approving this for one year, we don't extend a lease that I cannot see, at least when I reviewed this. I didn't see that in there. Okay, thank you. That was, I just wanted to make sure of that.
No, we're all set. And Chart Wells has been an excellent partner with us, and any, I think if we had any needs as a school body, they'd be willing to work with us to make it happen.
And I agree with that.
We do have to have some space, and, fine, the business person would like to make a
Mr. Hanos, I brought up your issue with the manager, Barbara Cohen, who informed me that they would, that they would have no problem whatsoever moving, but under our contract with them, we have to provide them adequate space. We have to provide them an office, that's the office that she has upstairs, and the freezer and storage of the commodities that we, that the program purchases. So if we could locate other space within the building, they're more than happy to move, but it would have to be secure. And that freezer is our freezer.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that.
In, in the contract, it specifically states that we maintain control over all, all equipment and space, and we have access to it at all times. So I think it would just be a matter of finding an adequate space, and that, and they're more than willing to work with us.
Okay, eight point five.
Madam Chair.
There was no-
Yes, we didn't vote.
Question, or comment? Question. I rely very heavily on my colleague, Mrs. Bowlen, for her good advice, and she indicates that this is a good company that we should do business with, obviously. I'm unaware of any contract, any public contract that is allowed to go beyond three years. I would like the administration's assurance that we are not obligated to put this out to bid.
That is correct.
We are, we are not obligated to put this out to bid.
We are, we have a renewable, but I'm going to let Ms. Bowlen speak to it.
So last time, it has to go out, it's on a cycle, so the, the state knows exactly when these have to go out. We were the first group that went out on the last cycle all by ourselves, and we put in, I'm just telling you, to go out to bid is about, I, I can't tell you how many, hundreds, hundreds of man-hours to do it. So the, the state, this is, we're doing it just the right way. It's a one-year contract with four, is it? Four renewables. And what we're proving tonight is every year it's built in, and I read, I read the new contract agreement, it's just what's supposed to be in there, is in there, and they have a very slight increase in the, and the guarantee, one of the important things is the guarantee. So basically what happens is it holds us not liable, so if, in fact, their promise that we're going, their promise to us is that they're going to come out even, that we're, we're not going to owe anything, that's, what's that? Is it not?
It's up to a dollar, huh? Correct?
Yeah. What, that, but no, but then, wait a minute, if we don't, if in fact, we go in the hole, that they will go up to the cost of their, their management fee and their, so, so it's, but anyway, so we're really, like, we have a lot of protection in there, and, and I read it carefully, and I think it's, it's-
Absolutely, and I totally appreciate that answer. Here's what I'm very concerned about, and what I'd like a specific answer from the administration on. The state law specifies what you have to go out to public bid on. Do we have an exemption on this? Are we somehow exempted from going out? We're spending over five thousand on this. Are we exempted somehow from state law from going out to public bid on this? In other words, we're just renewing the contract, are we somehow exempted from putting this out to bid for other contractors?
We, this goes out to bid, it goes out to bid next year.
Okay, so, so can we, can I get an, an answer? I, I appreciate that very much. Or maybe we could, you know, ask our legal counsel. Are we exempted from state law? From putting this out to public bid? It's more than five thousand dollars. Why are we not putting this out to bid, regardless of there's a, a right to renew? Why are we not putting this out to bid? And if we have put it out to bid, who came back and bid on it?
So I believe Mrs. Bowlen just, just answered that the amount of man-hours that one has to go through when one goes through a full bidding process on the food service, and we have specifically set up a structure for the Newport School Department to allow us to go through this one-year renewables. If I'm misspeaking, Ms. Bowlen's been involved with this much longer than I have, please feel free to jump in.
Basically, so-
But isn't that a state rule?
Yes.
And the state, all, all districts I've been in usually do it this way.
And so Newport actually went out, because we weren't happy with our food service, we went out a year early last time. You are allowed to go out early to take a new bid, but it, it was months and months and months of work. In fact, next year, to get started on this, that process will have to start, you know, very early in the year in order to complete it. So as long as you're happy with what's going on, you know, in your district, you can go for the renewables, and Ride puts out all that information on it.
So we are not going to find out, or I'm not going to find out, because I'll check tomorrow, we're not going to find out that we are legally obligated to put this out to bid. We are not obligated, even though it exceeds five thousand dollars, we can perpetually renew this contract without putting it out to bid?
No, no.
This is the last year.
This is the last year we can do this.
We're allowed by state law to go on, go beyond the three years.
One year plus four renewables.
That's all I need to know. Thank you very much, Mrs. Bowlen, and thank you to the superintendent.
Mr. Carlin, it's Article Two about the terms, and it tells you how it was one year, and then it was renewable for four periods of one year each, and that all of this was approved. And it was, any renewal of the agreement is approved by Ride in accordance with Article four point two, so it's right there in the contract.
Absolutely correct. I read the contract, I read it twice this afternoon, after I met with Mrs. Gaines, Chairwoman Gaines, but I could put something into a contract that says that, you know, it could be ten years. It's state law that dictates what we can and can't do.
But it would never have been approved if it was-
So I'm just, yeah, I think I got my answer. I'm just wondering why this is, you know, allowed to happen? If it's a four-year, why is it allowed to, so it's allowed to happen?
Yeah, absolutely.
Out of an abundance of caution, I'm going to vote against it.
Okay. Bobby?
Madam Chair, thank you. Chart Wells, as, as the superintendent said, Chart Wells has been an excellent partner. And in the year we're seeing red all around us, they've been running into black. And it's very nice to at least have one thing this year running into black, when everyone else is in the red. So I appreciate them, and they do an excellent job.
Absolutely. And Madam Chair, let me clarify, I think they do a wonderful job as well. I, I'm just, my concern is that, that public bodies are not allowed to, to have contracts that exist for more than three years. I'm, I'm curious. I'm very curious.
This is just a question. How could you go out to bid if you already have the contract that is still not?
No.
It's just a thought.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a thought. It's a-
Yeah. I've never heard of it.
Mr. Carlin, last year, when this, when the fourth year, one-year renewal was approved, the new superintendent asked for a legal opinion from Neil, our lawyer, and he made a, he answered with, it's, we have one more year before we have to go out to bid.
In, in the three-year, and at the end of the third year?
No, last year was the end, we approved the fourth year. This is the approval of the fifth one-year renewal. Last year, he-
This is the fourth one-year renewal?
This is the fifth one-year renewal.
So it's not eleven, twelve, twelve, thirteen, thirteen, fourteen, fourteen, fifteen? It's different?
Joan, we signed the contract in eleven.
I was on the impression it was the fourth.
And this is four sixteen.
Oh, okay, I'm thinking fifteen. Got you.
So this is actually the fifth?
Correct, and he issued the opinion to Colleen, that last year's contract, the fourth, the fourth one-year renewal was legal.
So it was 11, 12, 12, 13, 13, 14, 14, 15, and now 15, 16?
Correct.
And his opinion was that the fourth year renewal was legitimate, and so now it's a carryover to the fifth year being legitimate?
Yes.
Yes.
But did he address the fifth year?
Yes. Yes, he did.
He mentioned that there was one more year.
Okay, all right, and...
If you'd like the email, I can forward it to you.
Well, at some point in time, perhaps, but I appreciate everything you've given to me. I wish that legal counsel were here.
And I also want to add that...
Second time I've said that.
Ride goes, Ride goes over this, this contract with a fine-tooth comb. And it's also a boilerplate, forms that you get, that it all goes into, that you have to type everything into, and that's right in that, that form, that it's with the, how many year renewals, so.
They have to approve it for come here.
They have to approve it, and that took a while, too.
Okay. We need a vote. It's been moved in second, seconded, that we approve the one-year renewal contract between Chartwells and Newport Public Schools. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye opposed? You have that, Marson?
Sixty-one.
Okay. 8.7, 8.6, Mr. Leary?
Yes, thank you. Last month, we talked about holding off on voting on this, to see if we had any new information and to look at a couple of the costs, like the cost of Triplet to keep it, the cost at Kennedy, and what would it cost to refit Rogers, and possibly the use of Triplet being a staging area for the Broadway project, but I think that got answered, they're using Cranston Calvert, so that, that's all set. So maybe the superintendent can update us on where we are for new information?
Yes.
It might be tomorrow, you know?
Yes.
Okay, so, I have to say, I don't have any new information as far as refitting Rogers.
I'm, I'm... I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the Mahas, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, the Mahas Center, okay.
That's the brand new one, yeah.
Right, okay. So yes, Mr. Bill Marzetti did reach out for the public to know, did reach out to ask if the Newport schools may be interested or would like to tour the building. Many of you, I believe, did take the tour through the Mahas Center. It does appear to, it could most likely fit our needs for, starting in September of 2016. I do think, I believe, Mr. Hanos, the vice chair, was generous enough to reach out to the fire department to see if we fit within the fire regulations, what kind of costs there would be entailed, if we did decide to make the decision to move into the Mahas Center, and I do not believe at this point in time that has been done.
There was not an official report given back to us yet, but a statement from the Fire Marshal's Office was that there would not be a need for sprinkler systems if we just put in that other door, which is a much lesser cost, and that's, they will, they will try to get there this week. They told me they would get there on Wednesday, which is tomorrow, so hopefully they'll do a walkthrough and be able to present us with a formal report, i.e. giving us a better, whether it's door closers or whatever, so we can get a better feel for what is going to make us be, become code, if in fact, we do enter an agreement with the Mahas Center Group and somehow take that building into the school department.
Okay, thank you. And then Mr. Marzetti and I actually had an exchange of emails today, and he asked where he thought, where I thought the committee may be in this, and I said, I know there's interest, there hasn't been any decision made, but if his board would prefer, he, I'm asking if it would be all right to communicate with, send a communication, or if the chair wants to send a communication to the board to let them know that the Newport School Department is very interested in the property and would like to pursue further discussions.
Now, we don't have that as an action item, but if I could get some consensus from the committee as to whether or not you would like us to continue to pursue that building, we will move accordingly. Isn't it that? No, it's, it's...
To talk with Mr. Marzetti?
Triplet is an action item.
Right, so, actually, I should have made a motion to him before we did, but I was fine with it.
No, this is, this is what...
But yeah, I'm favorable with that, absolutely. I want to, I'd like to thank Teresa Piper-Wade for her spearheading this.
Yeah.
She's one that kind of took us on for us, and over a month, we come up with some new ideas that we didn't have last month, you know?
And I think Mr. Leary's motion on agenda item, I strongly recommend it at this point in time, knowing what we know now.
Okay.
So I'll make, thank you for that. I'll make a motion that we turn over Triplet to the City of Newport immediately.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion, Becky?
Yeah, I just want to say, I know that that building is full of, you know, like, furniture, and we also took, there's a lot of PTO things in there, so inside the Triplet building, and so I just want to make sure, I know we're turning it over, but with the caveat that we, you know, take the last couple tours to make sure that there's nothing in there that, you know, is needed.
Now, I'd like to just clarify. We're saying the Triplet School complex, which would include the White House.
Absolutely.
Okay? Just want to make that clear.
Yes.
So we don't wind up holding on to the White House.
No.
Yes?
All right, okay, so thank you for clarifying that. So I just want to make the committee aware, I have not informed any of the tenants that are in there, so again, if it's all right, I'm going to tomorrow call them right away and see, and talk with the city to make sure we can help still accommodate our partners there. Okay, all right, thank you.
Was, is it necessary to turn over both tonight? Do we just turn over one and...
We don't want, we don't want ownership of the White House.
All right.
There's no heat in three quarters, there's no heat in three quarters of the building right now. It's had been there for like four months.
I got an earful from someone who was over there.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All in favor of returning the Triplet School complex back to the care and custody of the City of Newport? Raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Unanimous. Now, on that other question I asked about consensus, I don't know how to, I'm not asking for a vote, because it's not on the agenda, but can we, do we feel that we should proceed in pursuing the Mahas Center property?
I think a lot of us voted...
I did.
...to turn Triplet over with the understanding that we have great hopes for Mahas Center, so, and I would think most of us are vote, that was why we voted the way we did, so I, I would think we're safe to say that.
Is anybody else feeling differently? Okay, I think we got the message. 8.7, Mr. Leary, you're still on?
Yeah, thank you. I'll make the motion pending that 8.6 is passed, that we take the capital improvement fund, which has 220-some thousand dollars, I'll have to get his exact number, some point, maybe 28, 29,000, to apply toward this year's deficit. That money was going to be, it was capital approval, was going to be allocated for Triplet roof, but now that we no longer have Triplet, I would take motion that we take that money and apply it toward our shortfall.
I second that.
Superintendent?
I'm sorry.
Yes, that's the, I support, I support Mr. Leary's recommendation. I make, I, yes.
It's been moved and seconded, that we reallocate capital, reallocate capital funding set aside for Triplet towards this year's projected shortfall. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. How many unanimous votes have we had tonight?
A lot.
Okay.
Going into exec.
We are going into exec.
We need you to read that, the whole nine yards.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that the school committee seek to convene executive session under jurisdiction of Rhode Island state law, Chapter 46, 42, 46, 5, for personnel matters and collective bargaining and litigation.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is, we are adjourned to closed session.